Buy them fair that.
There is a sandwich.
There is one on the table.
Okay, for them. And then do we have one?
Oh, I haven't seen one for us. Got this.
Yeah. Yeah. Guess I didn't set up two step.
What since you're handing those out and all don't.
Don't slow down, man. That's right. Keep going around the table.
You want that one?
Yeah. Yeah. He has the mobile there. Nah. Just all.
Yeah.
That is good.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Honestly.
Yes, I think so. And I think it's.
Okay. Yeah. When they say. Yeah.
And then.
Yeah. Now that's pretty valid. Some tortures.
Maybe else doesn't even go down.
Yeah. Yeah.
From the.
Yeah.
So.
Nice.
Going. That's.
Four times.
I have to see.
What the thing was?
No, just for.
Well, it's.
Sorry, we didn't have time on Saturday.
Yeah.
And I do rings of love.
So. Thank you.
So I logged in under the city.
You tell me.
Yeah.
Man, certainly.
Yes.
Yeah, like. I logged in the same as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I logged into my account and I went in to Vados and City. And I they checked on the settings here. And. Yeah. In. Yeah. See, yeah. Maybe there's people out there. Same. And there was like, it's gonna happen here. Pretty weak. Yeah.
We're. He's like. He's. Now, which are there? Oh. Sorry. And. Just. There's two. There's. It was. You wanted to see. Very. I mean. I mean. Part. It's not great. I'm sorry. Same. Why try this one? So. Those must. Which we. Six. That we see. On. The. Is. Anything?
I mean, Ben. That's why I want to consider changing seats.
Sure isn't me.
Suppose you let me hear if anybody's looking to talk tonight. We didn't have a sign sheet here. You guys sign in.
All right, six o'clock. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. I'd like to invite you to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everybody put their name down for public comment that wishes to speak? I would have that list. All right, we have Bob. Don't make sure that you introduce yourself and where you're from, please.
Bob Worthammer Stevenson. Here we go again. I think you've been tracking with the SOWards. The SOWards. I've been here every meeting since March. You've all heard my story, right? However, at work this morning, I was in Astoria. I was like, I need to be at this meeting. I told my boss, need to take more off, need to come into this meeting. The last meeting I missed, the July meeting, where you had the vote, right? You made the vote. You didn't have the data that councilman would ask for. You didn't have the analysis the council people have asked for, yet you went ahead and you pushed it through. You made the decision, because I feel like you already made up your mind. You know, and this is really frustrating. I think you've heard my story, eighty thousand dollars. This is gonna cost me and my family. And if you look at that, it's just a disproportionate burden. You look at the different users, the amount of affluent they generate. If you look at, say, a brewery, if you look at a lodge, I think there's not, you know, I haven't seen the data. I haven't seen the analysis. I haven't seen the cost. I haven't seen the forecast. I haven't seen the futures. Right? We've asked for this. I told you I'm a scientist and I'd love to help. I would love to help, but really, I want to see the data and the analysis. Because there's one councilman so eloquently put this, this is a money grab, right? And I don't have the money to grab. I'm working. I was working today because I want to retire, but I can't afford to retire. I can't afford eighty thousand dollars. That's more than we paid for our house. Right? So I think you need to look at the burden you're putting on the people you're trying to represent and be thoughtful about this. There's been no notification. I go back through all the different meetings. Please review the meetings. The point I want to make is it's never too late to make the right decision. It's never too late to review the analysis you have or haven't done so you can make the right decision. You know, as my wife so eloquently puts it, this is a misrepresentation of justice. We feel the burden as family members in our community. We're not the only one. There's twenty five other people, our families, that are affected. Evidently, these lists just went out. Again, we haven't been notified yet. There's been all kinds of statements about this. Please take your time. Be thoughtful, do the analysis, and make the right decision moving forward. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Michael.
Hi. Michael Berry, City of Stevenson. On your agenda item is the authorization to purchase a new fire apparatus for the city. I know a lot of you, I'm a retired thirty year plus firefighter in Southern California. And I can tell you, without a doubt. Go ahead and make that purchase. You have a fire engine that's your first line engine that is now close to twenty five years old. That's we're pushing the lifespan. I do like the idea that the pump is gonna be very similar or almost identical or identical to the other apparatus in the area. That's huge. As far as trading, et cetera, especially for volunteer agencies. Also, I think it was wise twenty five years ago when they started putting money away. Because, you know what? Save seven, eight hundred thousand dollars or even a million for a fire apparatus with this small city. If they didn't have the. 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 The foresight to start rat holding uneven way twenty five years ago. I don't think the city would be able to pull the fire engines unless they financed it, and that's not right either. It's still gonna take two years minimum before that rig's ever in service. So now you've you've got a first run rig that's twenty seven years old. And God knows what could happen as far as supply and everything else, you know, as we saw. So I I would really recommend, that was a pretty good price. I mean, a lot of larger agencies, their their type one engines are running a million bucks before outfitting them. So getting a rig for, you know, close to six hundred thousand dollars, that's a that's a good price. I think it'll. Look at the spec, the capacity is very comparable. Matter of fact, had a thousand gallon tank I saw, for most city engines are five hundred, maybe seven fifty. That's important in this area. So I I think it's wise that money was put aside. And I'm fiscally conservative, but when we're talking about public safety, I think that's a a wise decision to go ahead and make this purchase, approve this purchase, and that's gonna meet the needs of the community for another twenty five years. And I would highly recommend, after you make this purchase, you continue to put money away into vehicle replacement fund or however you want to budget for that next apparatus. You know, someday that. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. We have Dean. Sure, introduce yourself and where you're from.
Dean Maldonado, Ridgefield, Washington. We have the Rock Creek Cove property down here. I think we're going into year four. I think we're right at the very cusp of getting a permit moving forward here after all the different issues that have transpired over the last four years. So we're eager to get started and we're gonna take a polluted area and turn it into, we're gonna inject about six and a half million dollars, which will add to your tax base. So the small town, buy whatever you need, hopefully, you know, to help, you know, put money towards that. So maybe if you have any questions, feel free to ask me on here tonight. And we're here to be part of the community and get this thing built and move forward. So thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Sam.
Sam Canese Stevenson. A couple things. One for the road department. The Iman Loop Road needs the right of way mode. The sidewalk is blocked off until somebody did go out there and clip it with, clipped the blackberry's back. So it's a single path, but that road gets a lot of walkers and they're pushed out into the road now. And it's not a neighborhood road, so cars go a little faster coming around that bend, just a concern. Yeah, so I assess that gets bumped up on your mowing list. Never mind, it looks terrible. Second thing I had was for related to water sewer system. I was on vacation for a few weeks and I didn't pay my water bill on two days later. So when I got home, I had this yellow nasty gram in my mail saying you're gonna turn my water off because I hadn't paid the bill. Now, it wasn't like I was six months in arrears. It was one month. It was two days actually past the due date when this got sent out. All of these debates, this gentleman's point that we have had on paying for the sewer system, how to manage the sewer system, how to deal with the water problems. And you're sending out nasty, this kind of stuff turns people against the city forever. People will hold a grudge. So, you know, long term, we're trying to build a community enthusiasm, understanding, support, and but we're sending out these notices saying we're gonna turn off your water if you don't pay your bill immediately. Really? Really? I mean, I don't know who came up with this idea to send bills, to send notices like this out on day one, but it needs to be looked at and it needs to be a little friendlier. That's it. If you want to look at it, because some of you may have paid your bill, I can pass this around. It really isn't nasty. We're gonna terminate, you know, it starts out with a termination notes, delinquent. Your complete payment is not received, your water service will be locked. And really?
I would like to see it if he passed, wanted to pass.
I would love to pass her.
Thanks, Sam. Anybody else? All right. There have been some changes to the agenda. Also, it's moving along with all. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I want to approve consent agenda. Second.
But first and a second, any discussion? All favor say hi.
Hi.
All right. Any opposed?
I am for, yes.
Gotcha. All right, Sheriff's report.
Good evening. I want to first of all, thank Councilmember Cox and Rice and Administrator Wood in particular, the time today to spend some time with us for a discussion. Appreciate it very much. Secondly, are there any questions about the documentation provided to you for the month of July? Thank you for your time.
And we'd like to thank you for the, tell Sheriff Shire, thank you for, do you for your time today as well.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
All right, and we're gonna move a couple presentations up closer to the top of the order. So Ray would like to provide. Chief Bratton would like to provide an update on the fire department.
Yeah, so. We've had a few meetings. I would say Wes, I, Councilmember Cox, and Anne from EMS had a good meeting about a month ago now. And it was very productive. I think that hopefully Dave felt like a lot of questions were answered. And a lot of good discussion about a lot of things around the fire department, whether it's the city or the rural district, were answered. As far as with EMS, like we had mentioned, EMS is working with us at the rural district and also working with the city now, kind of with the goal of looking at what it looks like for the city, if you want to call it gets out of fire business or rural, there's starts to run the fire operations. So they're working with us on the admin asset policies, which include looking at our, getting things like hiring standard operating procedures up to date. There's a lot of new on fire teams, you know, getting those current also training. One of the benefits of our relationship with them is, you know, their career staff helping us with EVIP, which is emergency vehicle driving, the safety and operating of apparatus, first aid CPR, also working with them. We had a local resident donate a car and they're gonna work with, train with us, but we're gonna train with them at our station, the upper station for vehicle extraction, how we can help out in in those side of massive or critical motor vehicle accidents. So that's going well. There will be a lot of questions. I'm guessing there's a lot of questions from the EMS team already at City Hall. I'm trying to help how I can. If they have stuff, sometimes I ask for all for help or past chiefs because they have some knowledge on things that that can help out as well. But that's kind of what's going on right now. The last thing I wanted to address was just, I had quite a few emails recently, and and most, a couple of them are concerning some comments I made about me being a volunteer chief. So I thought about the way to explain it the best, and I wrote that down, and this is just gonna be shared with you all. Recently, there has been a lot of questions about what it means to be a volunteer chief. Some people in the community and council members have repeatedly, you know, stated that I make fifteen hundred dollars a month between the rural district and the city. I am not trying to discredit the stipend. I'm thankful for it. But I'm still a volunteer chief in the meaning that I have a regular career. I have a family. I don't punch in and punch out daily at the at City Hall or the fire station. I've done the work for the WSRB audit and stuff like that on my own time, sometimes at the night when my kids are sleeping, sometimes down here at City Hall when I have time. So I do hold myself to a very high standard as the chief. But the term B being a volunteer chief is not trying to dishearten my responsibility. It doesn't mean I don't have responsibility. As a volunteer chief, that means I have given up a lot of my privacy and freedoms I used to employ. I know I have to hold myself to a higher standard in the community than I used to, meaning sometimes I don't get to enjoy the weekends like I do because I have a responsibility to lead the team and work with the team when the community needs us the most. The same goes for my team that's here tonight. A lot of them sacrifice a lot of time training and responding to throughout the counties and communities, giving up their time to people they don't even know when they need them the most. They give it, our motto is kind of you give it all when you can. Our careers and our families can come first, that is part of being a volunteer. I pro, the fire team is always at top of mind for us when we have a pager. It's also the next in line after our family. That's one important thing, and that's, that was, I've explained it to a few of your community members that asked me about it, and that was just my point on it. I am not trying to ever say I'm a volunteer, I don't do anything, or I don't answer. There's just a process to it. It's, I don't, you know, I think most of you understand that and would ask me if I was trying to, you know, try to discredit, you know, the thousand dollar stipend or my role. That's not what I'm trying to do. It's just that I do have other things that are priorities, even though I put, I mean, I hope you all see I'm putting a lot of time in the chief of our department. That's all I got.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, next up, we have, I guess, speaking with Tim Shell from Shell Engineering, who's going to talk about our engineering standards.
Hi, I'm Tim Shell, Shell Engineering and Consulting from Ridgefield, Washington. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of the, something we recently completed and provided to you is the the engineering standard details or standard plans. Standard plans are something that's used to ensure consistency between with the various infrastructures that go into the public right of way. Things like the streets, the sanitary sewers, the waters, storm sewers, stuff like that. And they also cover a range of control and now some details that we provided for a single family housing construction. Reason why they've been updating is we've been, we've been, I've been working with city staff to update the engineering standards. The standard plans are part of the engineering standards that are used during the construction phase of the project development. The old standards were at least twenty years old, and so it was a good time at this point to update this old stamp engineering standard details to cover things that have changed in twenty years, like construction practices and materials. Some of the other reasons that the, yeah, they're updated is what they're used for is they establish consistency within for the infrastructure with within the right of way. So you know, when the crews go out, they know what type of parts they need and to repair the things that are, that need to be repaired. It also facilitates the permitting process so that when a project comes in, admitting we can give them the standard details rather than them trying to develop them on their own and then, you know, back and forth. Well, that's not what we want. This is what we want. And so so that's one thing that the standard plans we get support. And yeah, like I said, we also, at this point, we added, created some standard details for single family construction that didn't used to be there, and seems like that's most of the permits that come through on premieres is the single family houses. So it'll help facilitate that permitting process. That's really all I had to say. You know, I think that you all had the details to look for, and if you have any questions on what they are or what's in there, I'm happy to answer them.
So Tim had worked on this for a few years. It was a long process, because you guys know this, there's well over a hundred standards. It was quite the, quite the uplift. And given that, we wanted to make sure you all had ample time to review, but on top of that, if you did have questions or concerns, we thought it would be best to have Tim here to help address those. So if that is, you wanted to do a quick overview and then open up the table to questions.
No, I I looked them over, the ones that you sent out. I thought they were really good.
I have a question on, some communities are adopting standards for like a single family home construction and stuff when wildfire areas where they're having, requiring different things to harden a home or I'm getting the terminology wrong, but you probably know what I'm talking about. And have you done much work on that, on fire prevention in terms of engineering standards and things that homeowners can do? And then there's probably a debate among municipalities over what you require and mandate and what you don't. But I'm just curious if you've worked in that area very much.
That's a good question. The standards that I've been working on are by mostly to the the public infrastructure. Okay. What you're talking about would probably be more of the UVC building code type of.
Yeah, right.
As opposed to the public's infrastructure.
Yeah. Okay.
So no, answer your question.
Or any other questions you all have for Tim?
Okay, thank you.
Very much, Tim. We don't have this on the agenda to vote on tonight. The other thing I wanted to mention is we will need to pass an ordinance. We are happy to present that next month, or the other option would be to kick this over to planning, management, and like Derek.
It's either vote next month.
Vote next month.
Or go through planning and then vote.
Well, all of you. All the options were on the table for.
Well, this is probably technical planning probably has enough because they're working on the Airbnb issue and stuff like that. So I don't know how much they'd want to get into this and whether that would be. I mean, I'm just one person.
Right, I'm okay with with bringing us. Yeah, if that's, yeah, again, I'm not trying to.
I, having been on the planning commission, I'm thinking to myself, what in the world is all this? So they have, they have enough on their table, I think, rather than to try to delve into weeds like that.
Absolutely. We just wanted to make sure all the options were available. We will bring an ordinance for the September.
If we were wanting to stall this, we'd say yes.
Thanks for coming.
Public hearing.
I'd like to open. I'd like to open public hearing at six twenty one. This is in regards to a short plat vacation. Who's presenting the staff report on this one?
I will start on the staff report by putting hand to Robert for fairness disclosures. Uh the proposal in front of you is for a plat vacation. Um. Plats is uh official document that divides land. It sets out uh what one person owns versus another person owns. And a plat vacation is where you go back after the fact and change something about uh that plat. And specifically, one of those changes is uh altering a public publicly dedicated area. So you do have a proposal that's been submitted by the landowner to vacate. Both one lot line that's within the flats uh to turn two lots into one. And to alter the location of public access easements. And I'll I'll go and tell them.
Yes, for the fairness uh doctrine, we just have to make sure that. Nobody who's sitting on council who may adjudicate and or respond to this vacation has an interest in the real property. Has a financial interest in the real property, has an interest in the outcome of the decision, or you have had any communication. With the landowners themselves prior to this meeting. So I just need each of you to vocalize that you do not have a conflict of interest so that we can move forward. I do not. Mr. Gatz, um I talked with Mr. Maldonado. Probably a year ago, asking him how it was going, but other than that, no. Mr. Rice? You are clear to move forward.
So this proposal is related to uh developments um. That's been proposed on Rocco. It's land that had been owned by the county. Uh the county put it up for sale and the uh current ownership. Group bought it or one iteration of the current ownership group purchased that. They've submitted a couple of different development proposals um to the city. Both of those have been reviewed under the city shoreline management uh. Program and uh the most current one was reviewed in twenty twenty three. Uh the. Planning Commission is the body that's assigned to review shoreline uh permits for you. Planning Commission reviewed that shoreline master program is about a hundred page document, and so they're reviewing to ensure that any project is consistent with that. Uh that review includes a review of things like public access and the. Public access system that's been proposed and how it aligns with the shoreline master program. So. Uh planning mission reviewed uh the shoreline public access that was proposed. And um they added some additional conditions to that uh after their review. The planning commission's approval was appealed. Uh and that appeal went to the state uh shoreline hearings board. Uh to uh adjudicate whether or not the planning commission appropriately implemented your shoreline master program. And um they ruled it, they did, um so they didn't remand it back for a different decision or to review anything or make any changes on there. So I'm spending some time on that because this project and the shoreline access components of the project. Have been reviewed by the adjudicated body that you've assigned to review those and make those decisions. And that their decision uh was called in to be reviewed uh by the state, the state said that they appropriately made that decision. So. Um I I hope that you can set aside uh the desire to review that in your deliberations here. It can focus on uh determining what the public use and interest in this proposal is. And that more specifically, the public use and interest in this proposal is aligning. The publicly dedicated easements with the areas that have been approved or required for public access. Uh the staff report for this starts on page twenty nine of your packets. Uh includes the um guiding policies here and that recommendation uh that I just made to approve this uh for a flat vacation. And uh that's the last step. For getting this project going. Um I will say that the um. Need for the applicant to go through so many soon um reviews is unique to uh non-GMA. Non-growth management active areas uh of the state. Where the state has gone and required a single um consolidated project review where uh developer brings a proposal. And all aspects of that proposal are reviewed at one hearing, at one meeting uh subject to warrant appeal. Uh they have not required that regardless. So instead, there's a hearing for the city council, a hearing for the planning commission and. Uh several stages to appeal. So when you hear people talk about it, why things are frustrating. A lot of it is our system, and we just haven't embraced the things that's um the state has forced others to embrace. They haven't forced us to, and we haven't done it. So. Uh something to consider for the future, uh but uh with with that consideration, again, just hoping you hone in on. The public use and interest in uh the review of this proposal that's been submitted by.
So um first, um any comments from the public?
Are you prepared to make a motion?
Couple steps to go through first. Um so any comments from the public? Like to close the public hearing at six twenty seven. Make your motion.
Uh based on the public interest in aligning the public use easements and public access areas, I move to approve this application for short plant vacation.
First and a second, any discussion? I'll never say I. Thank you very much. Who, all right, so um.
Four years there, just bent up.
Should have come here first, I mean.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
So we're just, are we looking for a vote here or just a consensus? Like, I don't see it. Fire engine purchase was seventy.
Just a uh voice vote.
So we're looking for a motion and a vote, is that what you said?
Yes.
All right.
And for purposes of motion, you just need to recite in there the amount of the. You're gonna spend.
I guess.
To authorize the purchase of. Uh one classified number fire apparatus for five hundred thirty five thousand four hundred twenty, but applicable taxes.
First and a second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to note that on the proposal, um. It does talk about. Find it here. They are, this is subject to our acceptance of the proposal and also proper contract execution. Uh so there should be a contract coming forward for us to uh sign off on. Prior to the actual. Order going in, I would assume.
You want me to talk? Can I talk about?
Yeah, so.
Is that okay?
Yeah, the question I guess would be, are we approving that contract by this?
Yes, and that's part of the um the Sourcewell in Houston Galveston, the uh licensed procurement outfit that's approved through the inner states. Uh fire chiefs association that do the procurement. So yes, we enter into a full contract. We'll have a consult meeting. Houston Galveston, who uses Sourcewell, that's who the state has approved. To do the procurement process. They handle the rest of it. So yes, there'll be a few, there'll be. You know, like I will come back probably with, you know, when they start to outfit like the cabinets with. Where we put the SCBA's and stuff, there'll be a few minor tweaks. That's why the contingency funds kind of there. It will end up being a little bit more once we outfit. The the uh put the hardware into like whole tools and stuff like that at at there. We choose that. That's why they fly us out there three times. Um but yes, there will be. There's an original, there's an initial to like kind of initiate the process. It'll go through uh. The uh the procurement firm uh Houston Galveston and Sourcewell, then. There'll be a pre-construction. Uh they'll fly me out in the next couple of months or two of us. To do a pre-construction uh tour of the plant and what they're gonna do. And then, yeah. There'll be, there'll be multiple times to sign sandwich change orders and stuff like that. And if you're approving the original amount, then yes, then. When we come, I would say that when we get to the finish line, maybe then we approve, there'll be a higher amount. Probably that we say this is the final amount. That's why I had the contingency in the original. Uh doc, the plans I've given you over the last few months.
So that contingency is in the five hundred and thirty five?
No, the the contingency I, when I I thought it should be five to ten percent for. The uh chassis and then also for equipment, that's the cost could go up. You know, so I thought that um that is the contract price they have sent for that truck we designed. Um but I thought, I didn't, I didn't know what if you guys approve a contingency fund. If not, you could just approve the final amount when it's done. And I could update you as they fly us out there and let us know what's going on.
So we're proving that we would be right now.
Here's the truck. Here's how much.
The procurement amount, and then we the actual drive it off the lot price.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Whatever it is.
Yes.
You know, um would be, that'll be, you come back and say, all right, the truck's ready. Here's what it is.
Yeah.
We've got it fitted.
Yes.
We need, and this is how much it is.
No, right, when um, once you get your hands on it, what else needs to be done to it?
Um so when we get it delivered, so here, okay, so. When it's prepared, you know, and this is where you hope it's not the middle of winter. It either drive it back or it gets delivered. So that will be the first step. Um then it'll go out to. Is it True North? I think out in Lo Ha. They do the striving, you know, the. Putting all the equipment we buy throughout the process like. Axes and hoes and everything else. They'll put that on the truck. Then we'll have to wait for uh usually I think the place that we've used in the past, like for Engine twenty three, we'll go there and put. You know, Stevenson Fire, all the stickers and everything else on there, and that's usually another six month process.
About the radios and all that.
Uh in this contract, uh Twain is putting the radios in for us.
Okay, are they compatible with what the.
Yes.
Current radio contract is with.
Yes, VGF and UHF. We carry both because we're UHF. All of our five county mutually are on VGF.
Okay, but I mean, are they the same radio?
Yeah, we'll go, yeah, Motorola.
Okay.
Yep, all right.
You know, a question I have on the agenda, you probably saw it, it said, due to supplier volatility in the current marketplace, the vendor is noted, the city will be responsible for any. Price increases mandated, and then it goes on. So. I was concerned because are we approving the five thirty five or are we approving whatever it might end up being and we don't know. So what's the most?
The five thirty five is like the start price.
So yeah, what would be the maximum, you think?
I think. Ten percent contingency is pretty safe, because we're not. We're not getting anything fancy on that truck that could, you know, there's no. You know, I, you know, generator, there's, you know, like that's um built into the PTO, you know, the seats aren't the. You know, we were, it's a, it's a straight commercial cab. Um but there will be, because there's things that change, like, you know. Um that, you know, maybe the layout of the boxes or what they do, or they have a massive price increase. They put it in there because of. We all know what happened during COVID.
So we're looking at probably six hundred thousand.
I would, I I I say to budget like five eighty to six hundred, that would be the contingency too. But the document they provided us says five thirty five. And the chain, I forget the, you know, but that's what they said. Here's what it is, because. We went with a truck that was just delivered in Idaho. So they're like, here's how much it's almost exactly like it, except we removed a couple. Like the hose reel and something else on it. Um yeah, so they knew exactly, there's no engineering, there's no. This is what it costs for the one just delivered.
Yeah, I have a few more questions. You know, I think what it is is. I think people get confused when I ask questions and they think I'm against something, and that's a mistake. Because a lot of times I'll be for something and I analyze the heck out of it. So it doesn't mean I'm against it and people. So I just want to explain that and and sometimes when I see in a packet, I think Chuck at one point had said, well, come and give you a sales presentation. That's how he put it. And so I know we've been discussing this a lot, little bits of pieces here and there, but when I look at the packet, I just would assume that there'd be a concise. To use Chuck's term, sales pitch. Uh here's why we need it, and that would all be in the packet. Uh. Even if it's stuff that was mentioned in bits and pieces through the last year, it'd all be in one place in the packet. And the reason I say that is because I'm the one, if I'm in a grocery store, a citizen will say, hey, there were just two pages on that. You guys just. A pretty six hundred thousand. I'm gonna get the questions, and so are other people. Because we made mistakes in the past, the city, not on fire truck purchases, but on purchases, where we really didn't do our homework. So we have made mistakes. In the past that have come back to bite us. So so um I think what it is is people just sometimes aren't. Maybe used to hard questions, but my wife and I typically ask are harder on each other when we do a kitchen remodel than I've ever seen the council be. So I don't think we're being. Uh mean by the questions, and I'll give you a perfect example of that. I'm almost down to a few questions. Today I had a citizen call and say, well, hey, have you looked at refurbishment? And the citizen, I made copies so you can see. Um I'd like to pass.
Would you want me to answer that question?
No, but I, yeah, and and in other words, and so uh so then my question is, I don't know. So have we looked at refurbishment?
Yes, the starting bid of the front truck is three hundred thousand dollars just to get it in the door and start. Because the front pump, which. Cannot be used anymore. So we have to cut the front off, remove, extend the cab, put a midship on. Redo the engine and the transmission.
Okay.
So the start, just to start, they said, was about three hundred thousand from two outfits in Washington.
Okay. Okay, so the refurbishment wouldn't be an option. So was that looked at?
Yes.
Okay, so it was like that, because um but I had heard that it wasn't, but it's good to know that it was. The. The other thing is, we know that we're talking with Fire District Two and. And we know from our meetings that. Both entities have been shown have different amounts of confusion at different times over what's fair on the split with the money. And both entities have said that, hey, we're confused by different things, by our own budgets. Um so. Uh I'm just wondering, let's say that when we, and I know that both entities are in having audits done now and getting. Trying to get better at the finances or a better understanding of the finances. So if a year down the road, let's say we approve this, and a year down the road. I'm thinking that we could probably, if we underpaid. As the Stevenson City entity for our population and our thing, I think we get it, or we overpaid. I would think as we continue to have discussions over contracting with you folks. We could take this large, this would be one of our largest purchases into account.
Yes, and I talked, me and uh when Wes, I and uh Superintendent Luters and Dave met, we talked about that. I mean, if you guys want to take a lot of time, I would compare it to, I just short to almost like business taking over another business. There's a dating phase, and then there's the marriage phase. And if you say the city, just for easy number, this is has two million dollars in assets. We say, sure, we'll discount twenty years by a hundred thousand dollars then, when the assets are rolled over. That's all part of that calculation when there's. There's a, you know, when that comes to around, that's why EMS is doing all the. Admin accounting work on trying to figure that out for us.
Okay, so that was one of my concerns when we sat down to talk is, okay, well, we're turning over that, we're turning up there, you know, basically. Seven hundred thousand dollars of timber assets, you know, all of that, that fire fund. Um so how does that equate out? As far as the city goes, when they start contracting back with Fire District Two. And so that was, that was a big part of that conversation.
Yeah, so then.
We could be at the spot where we order the truck. And we would just have to negotiate. Maybe you say, hey, twenty twenty seven, take it. Like, here's the asset you guys are running with it now. And it would just change to where the rural district is paying for it. It just depends on how that's negotiated, but typically you would say, hey, you have. Two million in assets, whether it's fifteen, twenty years, if your price is three hundred thousand a year, we're gonna discount you by a hundred thousand a year for twenty years. And just roll the assets over.
Right.
And then that's how, you know, that there's the recruit, but that's, you know, that will get talked about when we get get to it.
I think you need the fire truck. I get that, and I uh the concern was that, yeah, so. The fire truck is probably gonna be used throughout the county, how it gets paid for. And I, my concern was, you know, and I think you're answering it. I have less concern now is um. You know, I'm just trying to. Number one, have excellent fire protection for Stevenson, as we all do, and and thank you folks for the fire protection you give us as volunteers. Uh but also protect the pocketbook of the taxpayers here as much as possible.
And there was an email, I think, I don't know, when I see that email, I think it goes to all of you. There's an email from. There's an email from um a resident of the county about kind of some of this stuff, and I think it said it went to city council too. We have operated a plan as long as I've been here, the city apparatus does not leave the city unless it's critical residential or commercial need uh in our mutual aid area. And since the rural district got pumper tender twenty-three, I don't know that that truck has left city Stevenson or Carson or North Bonneville in the past four or five years. We always, our plan is that trucks always left here when we go on on mutual aid, because the rural district reality is, is the rural district have enough apparatus to pro- provide their own strike team on fires. The city has one apparatus and we understand does not have the apparatus to go. But we, it has gone to cascade locks in the past, like when um the pellet mill was burning really good and stuff like that, and went over when there's commercial or residential need here locally, it will go out, but it's, for the most part, it stays. And that's also the plan with that, the newer truck, like, we might get another five years, maybe out of twenty-six, who knows? But you know, because there's no real uh uh putting it uh surplusing it value because those front bump pumpers uh fire, you can't use them, you can't, and in fire service, you can't, they can't even refurbish them, they, like I said, they gotta cut the bumper off and everything re, because they're considered unsafe, a flawed design. Um so that's the new, it would be maybe twenty-six adds to like, hey, twenty-three and twenty-six are going to cascade locks together help on a commercial fire or whatever, because, you know, and the new engine, whatever it gets called and numbered, it will be you know, it stays in the city unless critical need for, you know, commercial type incident or residential, that's what that four or five out engine is built for. It's not built to be driving up red bluff on a, you know, a wildfire or anything, or, you know, anywhere in the or jump off the, you know, fork and four-wheel drive on wildfire, it's not built for that. Any other?
No, I'm, it sounds like any other questions I would have, I mean, like, I'm, I'm not gonna get into questions like call volume, how many fires in the last year? Cause I, I think, but I think when we get into where we get into the deeper talks and negotiating and figuring out what's fair and what our contract would be, we can get into those, and I, and I, and what I'm gonna ask in return is that we desensitize ourselves to hard questions, because um and um so I'm, I'm willing to, just my one vote, uh support this purchase this time, but I just wanted you to know that
Yeah.
That the questions that I felt should have been in the packet this time with this large purchase, um they can be addressed when we get into it, because I, later, because I do think you need the fire truck and it's, and it's a, it's a good purchase, it just, who pays for what?
Yeah.
Based on the use of it.
Yeah, well, and just a little background on that, Pat. Uh even till now, the rural district pays and maintains all their apparatus on their own. And it's the same with the city's one engine, there's no sharing of cost. You know, I know we went to the seven thirty split, but still up to date, and then, you know, Rob provided you guys a little bit more history on that, Wayne's here too, he could provide some of that. There was times the city was pretty hard up and the rural district bought engines or out, the current equipment on twenty-six was paid for by twenty by the rural district, because the city didn't have the money when that truck was bought. So you know, there's been a lot of good teamwork, keeping the team moving along really good, but the the standard has been, from what I understand, the rural district buys and maintains their own equipment, and it's been the same with the cities, well, the apparatus for the city.
Any further discussion? On paper, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Alright, Wes.
So uh for ordinance uh twenty twenty-five uh that twelve twenty-eight, um the state has increased the thresholds in their model ordinance uh for business license exemptions, so um as as I write down on the books, the uh current threshold to not have to pay for a business license is two thousand dollars, and the state's model ordinance is decreasing that to four thousand dollars, so we just need to pass this to be, I'm thinking of plans with with the state ordinance.
I will move to approve our new twenty twenty-five dash twelve twenty-eight.
Second? First and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Alright, Wes, you're on a roll.
Alright, and then for resolution twenty twenty-five dash four five seven, this is a fee schedule update specifically just for the business license fee in uh looking at raising the uh uh exemption threshold, we also uh took a look at all of the other uh cities and their uh 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 fee uh call for a business license and we are pretty much the lowest in the state. So we were looking to up that cost, let's be in line with the rest of the municipalities, so currently it's ten dollars and we will be looking to increase it uh uh to twenty-five, which is still at the lower end of most cities.
Alright, Ray.
Yeah.
Alright, um I would make a motion to the resolution twenty twenty-five dash four five seven, fee schedule update for business license fee. Um increasing the business license fee from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars.
Second, first and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to caution us that we don't get into the habit of doing something because everybody else is. Um I think it's still behooves us to take a look and really do our due diligence uh to make sure that that particular situation, whatever it is uh is viable and we're not just doing it to get jumping off the bridge because everybody else is, so let me make that.
I I just have a question, do, we know how much extra revenue that fifteen dollars will bring in, what's projected to bring in?
We have not, we made that calculation.
So do we know how many people this will affect? I mean, we have that.
Uh oh, uh uh as in the number of business licenses? Honestly, yeah. That we we, we can get those numbers for you, but yeah, I I don't know that, it's out of my head.
Any further discussion? All there's aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Wes?
Move again. Okay, so for ordinance uh twenty twenty-five that twelve twenty-nine, this is related to the issue we discussed at the previous city council meeting in terms of of when monthly sewer charges start for um sewer. And 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 as you all discussed, and I think came to a agreement, um we want to clarify that uh monthly charges start at the time of insulation and and when uh the uh sewer inspection is passed, because there was disagreement about if it started at the time of occupancy or at the time of of insulation, and so, and 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 right now, there, there was no clarity on that in the books, and this will clarify before.
I wasn't aware that we had all agreed that this at installation instead of occupation.
I don't think we did all agree. Well, I I didn't agree to it, but I know that, but maybe I wasn't clear enough.
Well, that was my general takeaway, so so if I'm wrong, you know, please go for it.
There's at least three. I'll move to approve ordinance twenty 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 twenty-five dash one two two nine amending S M C thirteen point one open O eighty, clarify the monthly superchargers begin after installation and passage of inspection.
But first and a second, any discussion? All they say aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Wes?
Um actually, for for F and D, I'd like to turn that over to Robert. Um although I'll I'll just, sorry, I I was pressed by saying um Robert um looked at our uh code and found that there was no official policy on the small works roster, and and essentially this ordinance and resolution would clarify that.
The state recently increased the amount that you can have for your small works roster. Uh small work roster just assist the city in not having to go out to bid for another contractor, so what you're doing is you're bypassing that, but you have to have your ordinance and your resolution in place and the policy, which then your public works would follow when they decide whether or not they're gonna go out to someone who's on our small work roster, so with that recent change in the state legislature, it became clear that we didn't even have an ordinance on our books, so we put one together and and now put it out for the council to review. And it's, again, it's not a carte blanche, it just simply says that we don't have to go get three different bids for any projects under a certain dollar amount. And your ordinance will address the dollar amount, and then your policy will give direction to public works and how they can actually contact and contract ultimately. You ultimately still approved dollars going to lock the door, same as every other. I'd move to accept uh ordinance twenty twenty-five twelve thirty small works roster, reaffirming the city's small works roster processing procedures.
Okay.
Alright, so first and second, any discussion? On paper, say aye? Any opposed? Alright, next up, uh the follow-up resolution.
Uh I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash four five eight, small works roster policy manual. Um, yeah.
Second.
Yeah, first and a second, any discussion? All they say aye? Good. And who's gonna walk us through the USDA loan resolution?
I will take this. Um for the USD loan resolution, we need authorization to transfer out of our cashmere valley loan that we had in place for the construction of the pump stations. Uh this will transfer into the USDA land. And it will also grants or give us the USA USDA grant of seventy thousand six hundred dollars. We did pass a resolution authorizing this back in May, but we need this, or we passing ordinance allowing it back in May, and we do need this final resolution of passive.
So this is a resolution or an ordinance?
This is a resolution, we have the.
We proved the ordinance in May, right?
This is just, we're in the very final stages of transferring into our USDA funding, which was the intention from the beginning. But in order for us to do that, we need this.
And I'm moved to uh make a motion through the USDA loan resolution uh authorizing USDA loan in the amount of eight hundred seventy-three thousand and grant in the amount of seventy thousand six hundred for the city water and sewer system.
A second. First and second, is there any discussion? All they say aye? Alright, sewer ordinance implementation discussion.
Yeah, I can take that one as well, I was just gonna walk through, we had a request of what we've done so far and how we're planning on implementing this, so I've done kind of written out and broken out. Um our first step was to finish the draft of the connection letter that will go out to all affected property owners, we have completed that task. Um secondly was to reach out to all affected property owners that will be immediately affected via phone call. Um I have reached out to probably ninety percent of them, the ones I haven't, I was unable to connect and I left messages. I'd reach out, yeah, I left a little voice now. I checked his, he said them, there was a one or two that we were unable to track phone numbers down on, but I did send emails, I heard back from one of them, and again, was able to contact him and walk them through their next steps in the process. Robert is currently working on a connection agreement form. Um early September, those connection letters that city staff drafted and the connection agreement that Robert will draft will go out in early September to all the effective residents. We, uh city staff are here to assist the residents as much as possible, and we made that explicitly clear in both of the letters. And as far as next steps after that, we have created a tracking document to monitor the progress and the status of each property owner, as the letters do come back with their different intentions. Appeals requests are also in there, it's stated that they need to be returned within the ninety days. As staff receives those, we will coordinate with council to set up the meetings for appeals. The letters need to be returned within a hundred days of receiving it. As we receive letters that discuss the intent to connect or looking to enter the program and reach or work with each individual law owner, follow those. Uh for those wishing to connect within that eighteen month period, we will work on them to make sure the permits and everything get in place and assist them however we can. And we'll be continuing to track progress to make sure they do connect within those eighteen months. And again, assist those individuals and track the timeline for those who entered with the program, and they will be charged a half rate penalty charge once they enter that program. If we receive no response within the six months, a hundred and eighty days, the full penalty will be charged monthly. Yeah, my last one. The city staff will continue to monitor those who choose to connect within those eighteen months to ensure we can assist as much as possible to make it as easy as possible for them. Will do the steps that we have identified and lined out, we've started working on proactively.
Is is there any language in these letters that actually invites people to come into the city office?
It will note that this directly says, hey, come talk to us, but it does explicitly say, we are here to assist you in any way, shape or form, please reach out or come in.
Might be kind of a night, the letters haven't gone out yet.
No, no.
It might be nice to include that, and also be uh any reference to the the ordinance on page twelve that gives them, it outlines possible exemptions exceptions, so so they know how to exercise the options if they choose to do so.
The intent is to make it in blocks so that they can see it, checkbox, however you want it, but I think I'm Mr. O'Neal, what I'm thinking from you is that in the letter, we want to include a invitation to come in to down uh the public work.
Gentlemen tonight, but it was a box, that would?
Yeah.
Yeah, it indicated that it was gonna cost him about eighty thousand dollars to do it. Um obviously, that five percent threshold on assessed property values can make him a candidate for exemption. Then I think he should know that.
Yeah.
Walk through with everyone that I've talked to, all four options that they have, including the process.
Uh Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
On? What?
On on the implementation.
Um, I'll get well, I don't have anybody's ready to, alright, what's your motion?
Um, I'm gonna like to motion that we postpone the implementation of the new sewer ordinance until after the first of the year.
Second, what were you doing?
No, yeah, I'm done.
Oh, I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
The reason that I'm bringing this up is, number one, um I think that we have a violation of our ordinances uh specifically section nine, uh excuse me, our policies and procedures. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Cox, are you talking about the, the council member handbook? Section nine ordinances. Oh, second, ordinance of the handbook. Yeah. Thanks, yes. Um, it says um that the two readings of an ordinance are required, except when there's an urgent need. Or notices regarding financial franchise agreements must be adapted very good meeting, but um I know there was discussion about this at the the last council meeting that I wasn't here for. Um, but I feel like we've uh were in direct violation with that, um and I went back and reviewed the the tape, um and when um Mr. Rice brought up the, this issue, um I, Mr. Muth uh said, quote, I didn't see the agenda, but it's my understanding. That's what we're doing tonight, referencing the the first reading. Um, tonight, the first reading, but the second reading had been waived, so you could vote tonight if you want to. Then a little later on, he said, you do not. Then a little later on, he said, you do not have, you do not have to have a second reading in light of the changes you made in the workshop. But if you wish to have a second reading, that is certainly the council's prerogative, which is in violation again of that particular ordinance or that section. Um, mayor made the comment of, well, we have had a first and a second reading, and the changes have have been, there was nothing substantial. Um, we have not had, we did not have a first and second reading of this. And so we are in my opinion, we're violation of this, and we need to have a second reading of this ordinance before it's put in place. Additionally, um, we have asked repeatedly about where we are financially in regards to to the payments of the the payments of the loans and things, and we have not gotten that information. We've requested it several times. Um. We do not have our finance director in place yet. The information for our fees are based on the, I think it's a twenty twenty three cost study that was done. It's not based on current costs. We do not have that for that current financial status. So those are my reasons for requesting that this be postponed until after the first of the year.
Any further discussion?
Well, I agree with Mr. Cox, of course, um, and I think that we should probably have. I'm hoping that the other council members will take heed to this because we put ourselves in illegal liability if we're violating the plane meeting of this uh of what our research has shown. And I would suggest at a bare minimum that we hold off on this until the first year that we pass this in abundance of caution. Um, and get an opinion from a different attorney as well, because we got an opinion from the first one, and I I believe that our attorney is wrong. And um, and also, one way to look at this is we're not going to be losing that much revenue because we've actually had no forecast of how much extra revenue we're going to get in three months. So there's really no financial reason to not um be cautious. That's the end of my comments.
Need further discussion?
My question would be, why are we? First of all, who who would adjudicate this? And secondly, why wait till after the first of the year? We have an opportunity to do a second reading next month.
Well, you have a finance director that's going to be coming into place. We should already be, you know, at first portions of our two thousand twenty six budget. So we know what kind of a fire hose that that finance director is going to be going into trying to trying to get the twenty twenty six budget done before December thirty first. And so that workload is going to be tremendous on both Wes and and that new finance director, besides learning everything else about the our budget. Additional additionally, um. I really think it's it's hard for us to sit here and and have this ordinance go into place and pass the red face test, especially with these twenty seven people that are going to be impacted immediately. So.
Okay, so again, I would ask the question, who's going to adjudicate? And does this, would this invalidate the the ordinance that we passed last month?
It would it would invalidate it because you haven't had the second reading.
There's no reason why the second reading couldn't be next month.
Could be. But you also, but you also have a finance director that needs to come up with all those other figures and things first.
Why?
Because I'd like to, I myself, I would like to know where we are financially in regards to in regards to getting everything in line and make sure that all of our fees are correct. We're talking about charging penalties to people based on two thousand twenty three figures. I mean, we know that we've made payments to those loans and things. So where are we at financially? How come anybody, how come we can't be told where we're at?
We.
I'm not sure what that has to do with the ordinance.
Um, that's what I'm trying to get at as well.
It, the ordinance directly is affected by how much we pay per month. Those figures are based off of the cost study that the ordinance references.
Charge.
So we go back to the original ordinance?
Yeah. I think the motion was the implementation, that there's a pause on the implementation.
Correct.
But you know, just to check you're right, that that you could do it next month. I think there's just other reasons not to, but but you're right. I mean, so to be cautious, you would have a second reading. And you would pass this until the second reading happened, and then you.
If what you're saying is true, we've we've already violated.
Yeah, I I would.
That's right.
So that's right.
Mr. Mayor, I I I'd like to ask a clarifying question to uh Robert in terms of what what constitutes a second reading, because in my understanding how it gets adjusted by title only and 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 a person's second reading can happen at the same meeting. Am I?
Yes, it can.
I I just wanted to make sure I uh that they didn't have to be split up.
Okay.
Yeah, my my understanding is this opportunity to get input and introduce changes. And then if you need to have another second reading after you've introduced the changes, they could just go on forever. So we had multiple ratings.
Yeah.
And we introduced changes and we had.
But we did have multiple readings. When we had the multiple readings, because I only know that we had one last meeting.
Because it came up. We had a workshop, and then we had, we came up, we had a workshop with the changes. We had another reading.
No, those aren't readings, though. Those are readings of the ordinance.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I think there was such discussion going on there.
I back to.
No, I'm just trying to say that we've only had one legally, one reading last time. We haven't had a second.
And you have to give the public the opportunity to review that in the first reading. You have to give them the second.
We can, we have a legal opinion from our attorney.
I mean, you have a you have a council handbook that requires two or states there's two, but has a caveat for it. State does not mandate a two reading. So it's a local issue. So whether or not somebody was to come in and say that you didn't have a second reading, and so you're nullifying the ordinance, that would depend on the specific circumstances of this ordinance, the process that it went through. My recollection is we've had more than three or four opportunities for public comment on it, and that the last workshop, the big board that you went down fifteen, sixteen different issues with the ordinance were all resolved, and then the reading's done. You've had the vote on it. But I mean, obviously, your council uh rulebook has a two readings unless uh circumstances, but it's not a state mandated rule. My recollection is that you had multiple meetings. So potential outcome for a challenge would depend on the specific circumstances and whether the procedural defect is deemed significant enough to nullify the ordinance. That would be the standard should this matter go to someone outside of this room. Yeah. Based on everyone's recollection, you get to decide whether or not you had two readings or were you more than two readings. Certainly not here to make that definitive statement.
Well, we know the last meeting was the first reading, correct?
I I disagree with that.
But Mr. Muth, you stated.
Ordinance was in progress before I joined. Yeah, I mean, the ordinance has been going around. I I really realize what I said, Mr. Right, or Mr. Cox. Certainly don't want to take away from that, but it came up that moment. Do we have to have a second read?
Yes.
And my and my advice was you didn't have to. If you want one, you can have.
You said you said the second reading has been waived.
I said you can waive.
And you could vote tonight if you wanted to. No one, no one, no one waived it at that point when you made that comment.
No, you made a motion subsequently over my comment and then went forward with ratifying your ordinance. There wasn't a separate motion made. Do we want to deem this a second reading? You're right. That motion didn't.
Okay, so that's good that that's verified that there wasn't a second reading.
At that meeting, I don't believe that that was.
That season on the first.
Yeah.
Anyway, my motion still stands.
Also, real quick, uh, because I didn't say anything while we were going back and forth on this. I think that we've had, I I guess the disagreement is whether or not we had a second reading of the final product. Because the second reading of the ordinance, we had have had readings of the ordinance with public comment multiple times throughout the the couple of years that we've been working on this. So this wasn't a first reading of the ordinance. There were some changes made, and it was the first reading since all the changes were made, but that doesn't necess that is not spelled out as that's the first reading ever of the of the ordinance. So my my view of what this says, again, I'm not saying any thing, but my my view of it, my view of it, there was well, more than two times we read over the ordinance, changes were made based on those readings. But that's not the to say that there was that there were. That's the reason that we've kept going over is because we made adjustments, and then we got to the final version, which was what we as a council passed last month. So I'm not saying that that we saw that exact word to word every line more than one time. But the ordinance itself, we saw on multiple occasions with public comment throughout the years. It I don't think that is even.
Yeah, I guess the spirit of having multiple readings is to introduce changes if necessary.
And make adjustments. So that it does that.
I think I think I'm just looking at it differently and and who that it that those, all those discussions for the last year were creating the ordinance. That wasn't voting on the ordinance or or reading the ordinance. That was, no, I'm just saying that that was a creation of a final ordinance, and we had the final ordinance, and we've had a first read. Then my view would you have a first reading of that final ordinance and a second reading? So I'm looking at it like it's a cleaner process than you are, but that's okay. Doesn't mean, I mean, one of us is probably right.
It's just we're not seeing this the same way, but I'm.
That's how I look at it, that it's that it's cleaner. When's your first reading and it's clear? And when's your second when it's clear? So that's just, that's how my brain is working.
Do you understand what you're saying? I I just disagree that that's the 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 way that this is the way that this comes out. I'm not, but I'm not invalidating what you're you're saying in that. We just see it differently, so. Sorry, Mr. Ray, that was my, I wanted to make sure I energy on that.
Uh, state your motion again, and we will vote yes or no.
Uh, folks on the implementation of the the new sewer ordinance until after the first of the year.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
All of those. All right, motion denied or does not care. Um. I'm glad that you guys took the time to make special handouts and surprise us with a motion.
Uh, this was just discovered, actually, this afternoon at the library. They've printed out, I mean, my research.
All right, well, again, a little more. There's a lot at this table that insist on a little bit more heads up to prepare for a motion and to get their thoughts together. This was a surprise. So.
It was a surprise to me too, that it was so clear. So so I don't I don't really.
Just for the record, they will let know a motion was made. It was not on the agenda. This council took action on that motion.
Actually, the item was on the agenda.
The item was actually on the agenda was the implementation.
I understand that, but I'm just.
And you can make a motion of anything that's on the agenda.
You know, you know that, Robert. I'm, I do. I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
I don't have to call the mayor or anybody else and say I want to make a motion on the agenda.
If it's on the agenda, yes, sir. You're correct.
Pardon?
You're correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You have some information items in your packet for your perusal. Um, where are the vouchers?
Not received them.
All right, I will need some input from city council members in the next couple of days to peruse and sign the vouchers. Does anyone have any reports for the greater good?
I can report that, uh, as you heard from the undersheriff Whiteoff, that we didn't meet with them and it started with along with Wes, we started that process. I think I think it's going to be pretty favorable as far as the city goes, but also um for their county sheriff to be able to continue with that with that contract. So looking forward to getting that finalization.
Mr. Cox, do you see any um changes or big changes that would be notable at your with that contract?
With that contract or the law enforcement contract? Uh, just there'll be a um, an increase in the contract, but nothing as far as the language goes within the contract and the deliverables.
Really? So round negotiations are still the same deliverables.
Same basic deliverables, yeah, that that we've talked about so far, yeah. We just need to make sure that the budget is capable to handle it.
Uh, I have one, uh. I met informally with the uh the head librarian and talked about the um the the levy, the the, yeah, um, and it act and because I was unaware whether or not it, I I didn't go back and check. It was down by forty votes or what have you, but it actually passed. In Sumitak County, it also passed overall. Um, so anyway, that's just a informational that that I confirmed today that it that it did pass, so.
I'd like say so, read it.
I'm done, yes.
Yeah, hey, could we make this a part of the official record of the minutes? Did I pass it out as part of the discussion? Would that be possible? I hand out. Okay, thank you, thank you. Is it?
Is that for both?
Uh, yeah, both the, oh. No, just for this.
Okay.
Yeah, since we voted. Yeah, thank you.
All right, this is an opportunity for additional public comment on anything that we've discussed this evening. All right, anything that as a group you would like to add to the agenda next month? All right, meeting adjourned seven nineteen.
That.
Yeah. After as many items as we had.
That's what I was like, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
It's a chat, but then, yeah.